Will be run by the planning staff, so I'll just turn the time over to them. And then I'm here to help with any questions or follow-up.
Okay. Who's going to lead off for us then?
Thanks Nick. I will. So this project is for a proposed rezone and plan development at 1196 South, 700 West, just over the west of I-15 and just north of 1300 South, near the Sorensen Community Center. This was approved for a plan development last October by the Planning Commission, approved unanimously. And the Planning Commission has also forwarded positive recommendation, unanimous positive recommendation to the council for the rezone from R-1, 7,000 Single Family Residential to S-3, it's a family residential special development pattern. The proposed project and rezones for 18 twin home units with a 20-foot private street, sidewalk on one side, no on-street parking, approximately just over 3,033, 350 square foot lots. The setbacks in the area and the perimeter would match the setbacks of the existing single-family residential to the north is R-1, 7,000. And that's a 25-foot setback. To the south is an R-1, 5,000 district with an approved plan development previously that's established the setbacks at 15 feet. The proposed architectural style is in these images here. The height is the same as 28 feet as the surrounding properties, so it's not to exceed that. And the applicant has presented this project to the community council where there was, it was received fairly well, no opposition, just standard questions from property owners regarding the private street, the parking, criminal activities, kind of typical issues that are brought up. The applicant also met with surrounding property owners onsite, passed out flyers to all the surrounding property owners, and they met onsite, I believe there was 20 or so people that actually showed up. And there was no strong opposition there. And...
Can I ask you, how do we define strong opposition?
Well, there was one comment at the public hearing from a property owner to the south who was not opposed. The only concern was she was worried about people looking in her backyard, privacy issues. But adamantly opposed or opposed period, there was no one that really stated that they were opposed to the project.
Okay. I just wondered how we define strong opposition?
Yeah, it's fairly subjective.
If you get four people to turn out and one doesn't like it, or if you get 20 people to turn out and one doesn't like it, can they still be strong?
There were concerns that were voiced, you know, the crime and parking, et cetera, but not opposition to it because of those concerns.
And the, can you speak to the feedback from the developer to those concerns, even though they aren't strong opposition?
Feedback from the developer and how they'll address those?
Yes.
There was some conditions, as part of the plan development, the conditions of street lighting to meet the street lighting master plan, or the street lighting plan for the city, there was a condition to provide additional parking. There's not really anything the developer can do about the privacy issue, other than take out windows or something like that, that might look in a neighbor's backyard. But that's essentially how they were addressed, there was the street lighting. The onsite garbage collection was another condition, no parking on the street, obviously because of the width of the street.
Can I, can I, Chair? So, talk about the parking issue. How are they, this is going to be private street, I believe? And there's not going to be an HOA per se, and this, or will there be?
There would be an HOA.
The intention is?
Yeah.
So how does parking get addressed, I guess? Because have they taken out the open space for parking, or are they keeping that there?
At the entrance?
Yeah.
At the width, there's some space to the north of the street there that was looked at for additional parking. I'm not sure if it would be parallel or angle parking, how much space there is exactly. But there was garbage collection there and parking, so the developer will need to figure out with transportation and sanitation how they would approach that.
And so the, essentially the homeowner should decide if any parks on the street, because we have ones similar to this where it's just packed with parking on the street, even though the street's not wide enough for them.
Right, right.
They'll have to just handle it internally among themselves?
And they'll have no parking signs?
Yeah.
On the street as well?
That's a condition and requirement.
But the city will not have any say inside of there once it's built?
The city wouldn't.
They wouldn't enforce that, right.
So generally in the HOA, any member could just call a tow truck and it would be the responsibility of that person too.
Have they addressed parking out on Seventh West, overflow?
Yeah, and there would be adequate room on 700 West, particularly across the street to the east. Those are daytime uses and they're all up and down 700 West, could accommodate evening parking.
Is there any discussion with the neighbors on Seventh, though, on either side of the entrance? There's one neighbor on the south, I believe, but a whole line of them on the north to them, about parking in front of their homes or that becoming congested. Has that come up for?
I haven't heard anything from any property owners or neighbors about that, about that concern.
Okay. I'll put my concern out there then.
Sure, sure.
I am concerned that that would be the default overflow parking against the residential side of that street, so.
Yeah. That is a possibility. Sorry. I'll note that the pads for each property, only one parking space is required, so a garage space for each unit, but the pads would accommodate two vehicles.
Okay. Is that it? Is that all you've got for us? Well, I just have some clarifying questions then. 18 twin homes, does that mean there are 36 units?
18 units total.
18 total, so there's going to be nine buildings?
Several lots, but they're each attached, yeah.
Okay. Great. Because I was going to say, if there's 36, that is really a lot of homes and a lot of cars trying to make its way into that. And is there, you only need one form of egress and ingress?
Only one form.
Because the way that I see it, there's only the one entryway and exit, is that correct?
One access, yeah. And fire is okay with that, with the hammerhead turnaround for fire access.
Okay. And there's no issues with them being able to go in and turn around, fire?
No.
Fire.
Saying nothing.
Yeah, the other thing is Justin K. Court, that is just south of this. We're supposed to, I think originally this is part of their plat to increase, except they exactly like this, there's one way in and one way out of a circle. I don't see a lot of parking issues there, but they do hit the street a lot, so.
So then, the arrow that you've pointed there, that's just a turnaround point?
Yeah, this is the hammerhead turnaround?
Yeah.
That would be required for firetruck access and garbage collection.
Okay. Council members, are there any other questions on this item? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Are you all here for the next one? Nope. It's Doug Danzy. We're on to item number two. Actually, before we go on to item number two, we have some announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And some of these are from last week, so we just didn't get to them because it was such a late formal meeting. The first item is Harvard Leaders Program invitation. The council member Menon Hall has been identified by, or selected by the United Way of Salt Lake to participate in the Harvard Business School Young American Leaders Program. Harvard Business School pays for most of the food intuition costs. The other costs would be airfare and dorm lodging, transportation and other things. And so the question is, if the council supports covering the portion not covered by the Harvard Business School. More information is in your announcement, and obviously council member Menon Hall can add any other information that's pertinent.
Sure, I'll just add that the, there's, as you can see, I think it says in here, there's nine other cities. I think Salt Lake City is one of nine cities that send 10 people from each area, so there's about 90 people participating, and it's about best practices in community engagement, leadership from the civic level and translation into policy. And that's an examination of case studies, and then my understanding is that there's a, the other half of it is work on what you take home and how you implement that when you get back. So it's, I'm excited and honored to be invited, and I think that it will be a benefit to my work here on the council to participate.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just say, I think that council member Menon Hall would represent Salt Lake very well at this. I think it's really, really nice that she's been chosen. I'm deeply offended that I was not considered a young American leader. Geez, age discrimination.
I'm not sure I'm that young.
I would love to, I think this is a great use of our funds, and I would support that.
Well, you're young in spirit, Lisa.
You are younger than Stan, remember that.
Yeah, and I second what council member Adam said. I think you'd be great, and I think you'll represent Salt Lake City well, and look forward to hearing what you bring back.
Thank you.
Well, Erin, you do know that you will miss an RDA meeting and a council session and formal meeting on the 14th.
I'm willing to call in if there are some critical issues in there.
So, I'm just going to do a straw poll then, if you're okay with that. All those who are...
Are you going to roll call it?
No, I'm not. All those in favor of Erin subsidizing the trip for her to join the Harvard Leaders Program, give us a thumbs up. That is unanimous, Erin.
Thank you.
With Stan and Charlie not being here.
I'll bring you a sweatshirt, Mr. Chair.
That's a gift, I can't take it.
The next is if the council's okay beginning early advertising for the Harvey Milk Boulevard and honorary street naming. This would just be so that we can sort of expedite the public hearing and action process to make it completed by May. The schedule's sort of outlined for you guys, the advertising would begin April 7th. We discussed this briefly during the budget amendment discussion, I believe it was last week or maybe the week before. But this would help expedite that process. So if the council's okay with early advertising, we'll begin that.
Council members, are you in favor of early advertising?
Is there any downfall to this?
No. It's just transparency, right?
Okay.
Let's draw a poll, as everyone is in favor, okay?
The next item is a first quarter housing report. We typically ask if the council wants to schedule a full briefing on it, or if the council's okay just receiving it and reading it. Obviously, staff's always available to follow up on questions if there are, but if, we just wanted to check in and see if the council wanted a briefing.
Council members, would you be okay with a written briefing now, have the time to read over it, and then if there's questions, we can schedule it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, as affordable housing is one of our priorities, I am assuming, although I don't know what our future agenda schedule looks like, is there something on the coming agenda that this would dovetail with that perhaps we might miss in a...
There is a lot on the agenda, especially with CDVG and budget coming up, so there will be items that we can look at that. I think it would be smart for us to actually have an opportunity to read it, go through it first, and then if anyone asks questions, we can schedule it.
Yes, please.
And the next item is related to the packed agendas. If the council would be willing to meet beginning at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, April 19th. So the normally scheduled time for the 19th meeting is at 2:00 PM. This is asking if the council would be willing to meet an hour earlier so that extra time could be devoted to going through the CDVG allocation process.
Okay. Andrew, are you good with that? I'm looking. We're not going to give Stan and Charlie an opportunity, we're just going to do it. Right? I think we've got four votes, Andrew's...
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you, and thanks, Mr. Chair.
That's right. Your day job, right, Andrew?
Yep, I still got that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sorry for the interruption. Item number two, Nick. We're going to turn it over to Doug or Nick?
Doug. Start with Doug. Okay. A little bit of history. Salt Lake City had a series of sustainability initiatives, one of which was water-wise landscaping to modify Arizona code to encourage water savings. As part of the adoption of that, the city council initiated a petition to go back and look at the park strip ordinance. There were specifically three things the council mentioned to look at. One was height of plants that we presently allow in the park strip. Two was the health of trees in the park strip, and three was sort of education outreach to the community. So I'll first start with the, so we've looked at the park strip ordinance, but also, as we've come back, we've had a couple of years of dealing with the water-wise ordinance. So what you have in front of you is modifications for the park strip ordinance, but they're also gone back, we now know what works with the water-wise ordinance and what doesn't, and so there's a cleanup there. So the first question of height in the park strip, this sort of, this graphic just illustrates conceptually what we allow. I think the person in that illustration is actually NBA star in platform shoes, but it's a little bit taller than reality. But it illustrates how, the visibility, and that's been the biggest concern. If somebody's in a car, can they see people on the sidewalk? It's a safety issue. This is a traditional park strip. The city used to just allow turf, and the visibility was high. And again, we allowed, we, several years ago, allowed other plant materials up to 18 inches tall. Some of the ideas of allowing taller plants, and the reason the staff didn't go that way is basically, it sort of gets in the way of the whole purpose we want. The park strip area is not totally private, it's not totally public. It's part of the transportation area, there's also utilities in there, so people come and go. So we want adjacent property owners to take ownership of it, but it's still part of the public right of way. So the bottom line is, the staff recommendation is that we allowed some moderate increases in height to accommodate some native plants. This is Grollo Sumac planted in Foothill Boulevard. It's a native that can survive without water. Its ultimate height is about 20 inches, so we raised the height a couple inches to accommodate that, and things like creeping Oregon grape. But otherwise, we didn't suggest major changes in the height because of the visibility issues. In terms of the tree safe, tree health issues, the biggest problem we've had with allowing rocks and gravel in the park strip is a lot of times people will throw down tarps or plastic tar paper, put rocks over it. And the permeable tar paper doesn't let the water go into the tree, so there may have been a tree that was getting water before, but now its water source is cut off, and then rocks are thrown upon it. The rocks in the summer tend to absorb heat, and then they radiate it at night, so the trees get in a double whammy, you have less water and more heat, and so they're stressing out and dying. So the other change we made to the park strip ordinance is we backed off a bit on the rocks. Instead, if you're putting rocks right up to the trunk of the tree, you've got to provide an irrigation system. If you don't do an irrigation system, we'll still let you do mulch for, but 36 inches around the tree, which is really rather minimal. It needs to be an organic mulch that's not radiating heat and that sort of thing. So that was the second really big thing.
Isn't it quite difficult to run irrigation to the park strip?
Usually not. Getting a hose under, or a PVC pipe, four feet of sidewalk can be done pretty easily.
I'm calling you this weekend, Ben. Come over.
I've done it before. You turn the water, you can put a spray nozzle on it, and really just ramming it under it.
Maybe we should have SLCTV do a demonstration video, because I failed at this attempt to irrigate my park strip, just saying. Ran into tree roots, and it was not, it was going nowhere.
It's, and this doesn't require irrigation in the park strip, it just says if you don't have irrigation, you can't bring the rocks right up to the tree base. So people have a choice still.
Thank you.
The other thing we did as part of the park strip ordinance is try and clean it up a bit. We used to have an allowed section and a prohibited section, which left a ghost section in between. And that's been somewhat abused. We had someone that came in last year that wanted to put AstroTurf down. The planning office told them no, the mayor's office told them no. On their plans, they showed turf, they installed AstroTurf. Anyhow, they got enforced, but because of the argument that it was vague, there's still AstroTurf out there. And we didn't want to encourage that because it's not a biological thing, it actually takes a lot of water and petroleum to create, it doesn't, it's not helpful. So, in discussing those ordinance with the attorney's office, they suggested we just have an allowed section, get rid of the prohibited. If it's not listed as allowed, then it's prohibited, that gets rid of the whole gray area. And the allowed stuff is pretty clear, you can still have rocks, concrete, mulch, turf, other things, but it's just trying to clear it up. So that's what we did with the park strip ordinance.
Good question.
Sure.
You said in the median on that previous photo, it was, did you say sumac?
It's Grollo sumac.
So not edible?
I wouldn't eat it.
No? Okay. Because I know that sumac, some sumac is edible, and in fact, it's used as a spice, but...
And some of it's poison sumac, that is like poison ivy, but Grollo is a native that stays low.
Okay.
We, there are other sumacs around, some of the small trees you see on Four South that are growing, that's a stagworm sumac. Actually, this was specked when the light rail was put in, but the tree form got installed, so.
Thank you.
There you go.
Could I ask about parking strip depth? Is this going to change based on the depth of the parking strip itself? There's a strip on Four South with a new development the city's putting in where the sidewalk angles away from the street, and it, the depth has got to be 15 feet at least from the street to the sidewalk, and it's just dead space. So the homeowner's responsible for that dead space, it's a massive amount. How do they go about getting exceptions for things like that? That's a huge amount of space to take care of.
We didn't change that a lot. So on existing, there's three different categories. There's smaller than, remember, 24 inches, larger than 24 inches, larger than three feet. People are not required to put in turf, so right now, it has to be 30% of plant material. So you could still do gravel, you could still do mulch, even in a 15, 20-foot park strip, you still have those alternatives. Again, all this does is say you can't have the gravel come right up to the tree base unless you have an irrigation system.
I'm not worried about trees, I'm worried about urban farming, in some of these larger ones where the mulch is not going to be very high, but if you look at corn or some of the things like that, where it could be a row or two, that has enough depth from the street that it doesn't hurt the visibility, but if it's not allowed, it makes it difficult in there as well.
Well, I'm not sure I totally understand the question, but the, we have had issues with billing.
Some crops will be higher than the 36 inches, for instance. And it wouldn't be like a tree where you have a...
I think it's under the site distance triangle, is that right? Do you have that on your map that you could pull up and maybe we can discuss that?
I have it right here, but that's, yeah, that's the question. So on the site, yeah, the site distance triangle question.
There is site distance triangles in the code, and we modified it. Well, presently, it's the triangles there for major streets and driveways. We also extended it out for alleys and minor driveways. So you can't have larger structures in those site distance triangles. But the 22-inch height limit that is in this code is for the whole park strip. And basically, the thinking is, in most cases, there's plenty of room behind the sidewalk if somebody wants to plant corn and some flowers and other really tall things. So you're welcome to modify, but the way it's written, it does have a 22-inch height limit between the curb and the sidewalk. And thanks for clarifying that, because we did, it's a 22-inch height limit kind of for everything. There's exceptions for, you can still have taller rocks or taller bushes as long as they don't create a hedge-like where you can't see through.
Oh, continuous barriers.
A continuous barrier.
So it's broken up, is it defined in here by the, when we're saying that piece?
Yeah, so it's broken up. And we do allow structures out there, mailbox, utilities box and stuff. But part of the thinking is, it's not the best place for, if something doesn't have a semi-public use, there's probably better places than the park strip. We've had things like headstones placed out there.
Wow. What about the little libraries? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Is there a name for those?
Free libraries?
Yeah, the free libraries that people are putting up.
Mailbox libraries.
Mailbox libraries. Have you seen those? Nick, there, Nori, you've got to talk into the microphone, sorry.
Nori, you've got to come up to the microphone.
So the ordinance does allow some kinds of structural encroachment such as that?
For public use.
Or maybe even not public use, right? I mean, a mailbox, for example, isn't public use, right?
But it is federally protected.
But, right. And so, you know, if somebody wanted to put something in there, in the park strip...
So I've had two constituents say, I'd like to put this library box in my park strip. Isn't allowed. And my understanding was that it isn't allowed. So I'd love for you to say, actually, yes, it is.
Yes, it is. I mean, is that true, though?
Yeah, I'm trying to find, figure out the page number here. I'm looking at Margaret, the city attorney.
Chair, I have a question in Section D on park strip trees, just when we're trying to be clear, things about tree grates, states, "Tree wells with grates shall be provided, which have dimensions adequate to accommodate the required tree species." Shall be provided, that, if I were just a homeowner and I read that, I would read that as that the city will be providing it? Or does that mean I shall be providing it? And then it also talks about an irrigation system to ensure there's adequate water. Who is, who's the provider? The owner or the city?
It really depends on who's doing the designing. For example, if you're in improvement district, like Ninth and Ninth or Main Street, where the owners get together and design it, they're paying for that sort of thing. Generally, concrete is discouraged in park strips unless they're smaller park strip. But if you have a park strip and you say, I'm going to fill it in with concrete, then the expectation is you're the one that's getting the water to it and putting the tree grate in it.
So it depends upon if you've chosen the surrounding treatment to be hardscape, basically. Okay. I just thought, when you're trying really hard to be clear, that I could see someone saying, well, it said it shall be provided. I assume that means shall be provided by the city. And so I don't know if we want to tweak that a little bit to make it clear, under what circumstances the city would pay for the grates and the irrigation, and under what circumstances the homeowner or the property owner would.
Okay. Moving on a little bit from park strips, in terms of cleaning up the water-wise ordinance, the major things we did there was we retained what's working. What is working is right now we require people to put hydrozones on their plants. So any new development comes in has a landscape plan, and they usually list, reboot it, they usually list, you know, a five-gallon sycamore, blah, blah, blah. So what we've done over the last few years is require them to also list the hydrozone. And the city keeps a list of water-wise plants, and we can tell them what almost any plant is a hydrozone. We go from zero to five, so like a cactus is zero, it needs no supplemental water. A five is a cattail, it needs a lot of water. And also on the irrigation plan, they need to illustrate how they're separating. So all the zeros and ones are on one line, and all the fours and fives are on another line. The reason we do this is so right up front, the system is designed that they can have different times on their irrigation lines, so for the life of the whole project, it's saving water because they thought about it from day one. So that's worked really well. Other things that have not worked well, in our existing code, we have a bonding requirement, that you have to bond when you start and bond six... that you have to bond when you start and bond six months later when the plant's mature. It's hard enough to bond now. So we've taken out all of that stuff because in the long run, we were trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist because people can't get a building, they can't get a CO if they haven't finished what's on their plans. So this was a nightmare that wasn't really enforceable. We eliminated redundancies that were covered by other sections of code. We sort of backed off on technical things rather than defining a waterspout number seven. We deferred to public utilities, best management practices, because that kind of technical And then also, along with this, we had a tree protection ordinance. And the way it's written now, every tree anywhere has had to have reviewed by the city forester, and it's been overwhelming. What this does is sort of back it off and allows the city forester to create sort of a list of significant trees that have, that are worthy of protection in the city. And how that is a benefit, the tree protection ordinance allows the zoning administrator to modify certain aspects. For example, if you have a 15-foot landscape setback required, but you happen to have this amazing bald cypress right there, the zoning administrator can modify requirements to save a specimen tree. So these changes also sort of simplify the tree protection ordinance.
Doug, isn't that, wasn't that quite recent that we did the tree protection ordinance? In the last year?
It was in the last couple of years, yeah.
I think since I've been here. And now we're undoing it, though.
We're not undoing it. We're trying to make it easier to administer.
Can you give me another example of a problem that has come up in the last, since that was enacted and that this would resolve?
Well, a plan may come in, and on the existing plan, it may show, I've got 15 Siberian alms on the site. It pulls the forester into reviewing virtually everything. This way, he can say, you know, Siberian alms and Russian olives don't qualify as specimen trees, so if you get a permit at the counter, just don't worry about that.
Okay, so if it's specific tree types, it's not requiring that the, I'm thinking of this, is it a census? Is that what they're, we're calling it, that Tony Gliot's working on? Our urban forester is taking its three years, and we just funded another year of it in our last budget to get the census done of all the trees in the city. And then we can say, these are our significant trees, these are less significant. Is it relying on that?
It's moving towards that so that the city forester can have a list of this is what's important, so that it's not bogging up the permits counter with things that...
I guess, here's my question, I'll try to make it more clear. Are they going to approve or deny based on the type of a tree or based on the forester's designation of that specific tree with a GPS location as a significant tree?
Both.
Because we don't have that part done yet, and we won't for a while. So could we lose trees before that's done that we would...
Not necessarily, because the ordinance is in effect until, the only thing we're proposing to do is make some modifications so it's easier for us to administer. It's not doing away with those protections, it's not changing that in any way. Those are still in place. What that survey will do is make it more clear and easier for the forester particularly to help them assist in administering this ordinance.
And did Tony Gliot help you with this?
Yes.
Section of the ordinance? That makes me feel good.
Yeah, he was a major contributor through this whole process of doing that section.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. I don't know if you're still here, Nick.
We're going to play music for chairs for a minute, so I'll be back.
So we're moving on to item number three, the Ballpark Central Community Future Land Use Map Amendments. Michael Moy, who's a senior planner, and Nick Tarbit, who will be remaining here.
Thank you for your time and attention today. This is quite a unique project. As we, as a city, are constantly trying to accommodate growth and infill development, typically, we see a number of petitions that are requesting up zones. And this, of course, is a down zone that has received broad support from the community. Based on a petition that was initiated by the city council, we conducted a research or survey of properties located within the boundaries of Main Street, Second West, 21st South, and 13th South, primarily trying to identify properties that are currently low-density development that may be better suited to be rezoned from RMF 35 to some type of a single-family zone. And the zoning that was recommended for this rezone was an R1-5000 zoning district. Essentially, the community worked with city council to initiate this petition. There was concern that the community, over time, has been losing good-quality, stable residential homes to multifamily development. However, it should be said that the intent of this petition was not to prohibit multifamily development in the neighborhood, but to make sure that that development was happening in locations that were appropriate for, closer towards our track stations on 13th South and 21st South. And this is just an example of a project that recently is, it's actually currently under construction on West Temple. But these are the types of homes that they're trying to encourage preservation of. And again, as we've conducted research in this neighborhood, we had a number of public outreach meetings, we found a lot of support for amending the zoning to try and keep this type of housing stock in place near our downtown core. As is included in your reports, we've identified these 155 parcels. You'll see that most of them are between 17th South and 13th South. One of the first things we recognized is that the R1-5000 zoning district was largely in place between 17th and 21st, and there is a fair amount of low-density housing stock that's already in that neighborhood. Current zoning map is showing that we do have some variety of zoning districts in this neighborhood, a little bit more of a fine-grained zone. So I think identifying these 155 parcels is actually fairly consistent with that history or pattern of development. In the past, this neighborhood has had a number of zones that would allow some multifamily construction. And so there are a number of parcels that were not single-family that we're actually proposing to be in a single-family zone. There are some duplexes, a few triplexes and fourplexes, but primarily, I believe it's about 130 units per single family. Another issue we really started to look at when we were researching this area is proximity to tracks and walkability. And you see with this half-mile radius that we've layered onto this, clearly, there's quite a few homes within a half-mile of the track station. But the reality is, is quarter-mile is generally to be considered more walkable. And when we look at the half, the quarter-mile standard, you can see that, except for a couple of corners on that northern end of the map, everything is outside of the quarter-mile radius. Another thing that we were concerned about is, was this contrary to our master planning, trying to focus, again, density around our transit stations? And in the central community master plan, this map was provided for transit-oriented development areas. And again, it shows that quarter-mile radius. You can see most of those TOD areas are within that quarter-mile radius. And so none of the proposed rezoning conflicts with these TOD areas that are identified in the central community master plan. So our public process, we had meetings with community council, we had two different open house meetings, we had a briefing with the planning commission, and then finally, a public hearing in July of 2015. And the proposal, both a master plan amendment, which is required to be consistent with the low-density housing zone, the planning commission recommended approval of both the master plan amendment and the zoning amendment. Again, this is the breakdown of the properties that are being rezoned. 150 parcels are low-density, three parcels are medium-density and, or low-medium, and two are medium based on what's identified in the central community master plan. And it's interesting, when you look at the overall area, it's about 23 acres. So we're looking at eight dwelling units per acre, which is very consistent with that range of what is low-density in this neighborhood, one to 15 units per acre. So again, we have identified for your consideration the amendment to the future land use map in the central community master plan, identifying those properties as being low-density. And then the zoning map amendment also identified these parcels as R1-5000. Glad to answer any of your questions.
Aaron, how did you think the process went, the outreach?
Long.
It was long?
Yeah, I mean, look at, that first date's back in October of 13.
2013, yeah.
It's been, it's been thorough, to say the least.
You feel good about the process moving?
I do, and it was neighborhood-initiated, and it's really been continuously looped back through the Ballpark Community Council in a door-to-door effort in that area. I heard from one resident who said, you know, maybe this whole place should be industrial. And then I heard from a lot of other residents who love that quality and character of an intact neighborhood, and I appreciate that you showed one of the houses that's in that area. This is such a unique thing, to have an intact historic neighborhood really quite proximal to our downtown core. And it is under threat for development, but it would also be complemented by development around it and in these appropriate areas that the zoning has defined. I think that this down zone is a complement to the historic nature of Salt Lake City, really what makes our neighborhoods in Salt Lake City attractive, and it would help preserve that character down the road. I'm happy to see it today.
Councilman, I apologize. If I may respond to an issue, we agree, this was a long process. There were three or four petitions that were similar in nature that were initiated at the same time. And originally, our attitude, our approach was going to be, let's, let's processes all basically the same. And for a while, we were thinking we were going to bring all of these back to the city council to seek further direction. But we realized that this one was actually fairly unique. Some of the others we had concerns with, we weren't sure that we would recommend the change in the zoning. But this one, once we started to engage the community, we realized that it wasn't conflicting with our TOD areas. We felt like this is something that was worthy of really moving forward. And so rather than come back to you for additional guidance, we decided to go ahead and move forward with the planning commission. So that, there was some delay there in the middle of the process. Typically, I don't think that we would want to see this long of a process on a petition.
I didn't mean it as a criticism, though.
No, I know you didn't, but I do want to explain that this was a long timeline.
It was. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We are on to item number four, residential dwelling unit legalization. Thanks for being here, Nick. And Nick, and it looks like we have Christopher Lee. All right, which Nick is going to lead off?
I guess Chris is going to lead off. How are you doing? On, excuse me, September 18th, 2012 to September 30th, 2014, there was an ordinance in place, unit legalization ordinance, it was 63 of 2012. And after that point, it had a certain time that it lasted, obviously, and then there was a lot of feedback, it sounds like. And the city council initiated us to go and look at this again. And on September 30th, 2014, the council asked us to look into putting a unit legalization ordinance out there that would be on the books permanently instead of just that one-year window. And so this is what we're coming back with, with the findings from looking into that. And considering that, the, excuse me, the basis of what we are looking at is based upon, you know, the original ordinance. And I reached out for feedback to many different sections of the city who have something to do with us and address some major concerns in the first ordinance and looking at ways that we could improve that. And the changes that we're looking at is based upon, the first one, sorry, is that originally, that one-year ordinance said that a past tenant, neighbor, previous owner, or other individual who has knowledge about the dwelling unit could provide an affidavit about when the ordinance was created and when it came into existence. We felt that, you know, to eliminate some potential abuse of that, we would pare that down to notarized affidavits from a previous owner, tenant, or neighbor, instead of leaving on that any individual has knowledge about the dwelling unit. So that was one of the changes. The second is that the original ordinance, that previous ordinance stated that if there was any history of zoning violations on the parcel, that legalization just simply wasn't an option. And with the long history of zoning violations and how long they go back, and for all sorts of different reasons, that seemed a little bit too strong. So we opted for language that said, any active zoning violations documented by city records occurring on the property, except for those related to excess units, must be resolved. So if they're under enforcement because they've got an excess unit and it's been reported or something like that, that can be an open, active violation. And then any other violations in the past that have been resolved correctly, then we're not considering those. Moving on, this is timeline, and most of the feedback on this came from both building services and from business licensing downstairs. Originally, that we said that after inspection, the unit owner should make necessary corrections to bring the illegal unit into code compliance within 180 days or as mutually agreed by the unit owner and the city. And with that, getting feedback from both of those groups, they said that it would be much better to have this language, which is all required corrections indicated during the inspection process must be completed within one year unless granted an extension by the zoning administrator. The one-year extends it out past the 180 days, but it seems like there was a big problem because a lot of rental agreements weren't working, because they couldn't get in there and do the work within 180 days because the rental agreement maybe ran longer than that. So that gives them a little bit of extra time. And we also changed it to extension by the zoning administrator, which makes it a little bit more formal, and that way, it's a process that has to be done administratively instead of just inspect around the field saying, yeah, we'll give you a little bit more time and string that out a little bit more. And then, sorry, going along with that also, business licensing, originally, they are, they requested that everybody would have to get a business license. Originally, in this ordinance, it was requested that everyone joined the Good Landlord program, and they had a rather long window to do that. And they suggested, you know, if someone's going through this, once they're approved, they have to have a requirement to come in and get a business license within 14 days. And then what's in place to help encourage people to join the Good Landlord program, we have greatly reduced rates on what it costs per unit. They say that the vast majority, they've hardly had anybody who hasn't joined the Good Landlord program when they've gotten their business license. So that just makes that a whole lot easier and a little more streamlined there. And then going along, also, I just wanted to make the point a little bit further here on just the background of illegal units and how this comes about, and also the timelines that we're looking at on this. We're, we go back and we're looking at, the first thing is, you have to prove that the illegal unit existed prior to 1995. I believe the exact date is April 12th, 1995. And that's for a very specific reason. That is because that is when the new zoning ordinance that we use now was put into effect, and there were some major changes that were made. Previous to that, there were certain zones that allowed for multiple units, and it was pretty common throughout much of the city, but not everyone got their per... pretty common throughout much of the city, but not everyone got their permits to do that, and it was just kind of a little bit more shaky on that. And going back up until the 1950s, in residential zones, you could do units anywhere. In any residential zone, you could do two units, at least. And that changed in certain areas, like Federal Heights in the 1950s, and then other areas along the line. Until the 1980s, you could still do two units in a lot of the R2 zoning. And so it was in 1985 where we established all of the current residential zones, and we put most of the stuff that's in place right now. And so if you have an illegal unit past 1995, that's a little out of the realm of being able to consider, because everything has been pretty standardized and pretty much in place since then. So there's my overview, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
This is a quiet group today, isn't it, Aaron? We're going to be done here so fast. Okay, anyone have any questions? You don't want to make it hard?
Thank you.
Question, did you approach the apartment association on this ordinance?
I did not.
It looked like Nick was ready to say something.
Something, we can double-check on that, because I think that we included them in our mailing list for open houses and stuff. We'll have to double-check on that.
Okay. That was just my follow-up question, just to see if you had reached out to them. I didn't see it anywhere in the packet, so.
And they may have really been reached out to on the original one back in 2012. That was before I was involved with this. I'm really not sure on that one either, but we could do a little more research.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Does anyone need a break? We're going real fast. Okay, we're going to skip break and then maybe take one after. Item number seven. Seven, we're going to move on to item number six, 1700 Southwest Temple, Majestic Meats map amendment, with Doug Danzy and Nick Tarbit.
Maybe these guys wanted a break. They've been here the whole time.
Nick wants to get it done. We can tell.
I will say real quick, we do have the applicant here for this item, so after Doug makes his presentation, he's here to answer questions, or maybe may like to speak for just a brief moment.
And applicant will have five minutes to talk.
Okay. I'm going to find my graphics here. This is a petition to rezone the parcel on the southwest corner of West Temple and 1700 South. The existing site is zone CB. The present use is Majestic Meats, which is, does, is a butcher shop. Recently, the company decided they needed to expand in order to survive. They came into the city to expand on the site, but they're a non-conforming use at this site. So they have two choices, either petition to rezone this site to expand their use here, or to move elsewhere and sell this site. They chose to. Okay, then.
If you can move it far away from what you've just done, Doug.
I don't know what I did either. Anyhow, it, they chose to find another location, and the petitioner can tell you a little more about that. This is a photograph of what's presently on the site. The majority of the business is in the rear building, and they have offices in the existing home, if you can forward it. Ultimately, the staff and the planning commission recommended rezoning. The petition asked to rezone it to a mixed-use 45 zoning district. That is entirely consistent with the central city master plan, and part of the reason for supporting this is, if you notice, directly to the west, along Third West, there's an incredible amount of commercial property. Also, to the east, between state and main, there is an incredible amount of commercial property. So this map here, I just wanted to illustrate it how this interfaces with the petition you heard about a little earlier from Michael, which involved the downzoning of much of this neighborhood. All those properties marked in yellow are basically single-family homes that are being downzoned from multifamily to single-family. We had support from the community council to rezone this, basically because we were rezoning from commercial to multifamily, and their attitude was, if, they're not opposed to new residents in the neighborhood, they just didn't want single-family homes torn down to be the new residents. But if we were taking over commercial property, which there is a surplus in the neighborhood, that was actually a good thing for the neighborhood. Some specifics about this, there's not a lot of difference in between the CB and the RMF 45 in terms of parking requirements and other things. The most significant difference is, it allows an additional fifteen feet in height for residential buildings, but that has a caveat, that it has to be stepped back from the single-family zoning to the south by ten feet. So you're not going to have a forty-five-foot-tall building adjacent to the single-family home to the south. Along with that, the RMF 45 limits non-residential uses to twenty feet. So in essence, the non-residential height got reduced by ten feet, but the residential height is increased by fifteen feet. Parking in Vienna is similar. So with that, I'll just say that the planning commission approved it because it was consistent with the master plan and supported by the neighborhood.
How about the petitioner come up and maybe give us his little elevator speech on how much he loves Salt Lake City and doing business with Salt Lake City, and that's why you want to do this, and make us feel good.
My name is Ray McHale. I own, my wife and I, we own Majestic Meats. And it's been a family business for forty years plus. And the time has come, you know, it's probably bottom of the corner to expand one day. Well, the day's come, and, you know, it's actually long overdue, and then we find out that we can't do building, we did have the building draft, and I had no idea what it was, and they said we were existing, non-conforming business online. So what does that mean? So we met with the planning staff, and they said, well, here's your two options. You can petition to get a building put on there, try to get a variance, or you rezone it. I'm saying, well, we would like to stay where we are, because we could build existing, a new building, keep it existing, move it, and then tear it down. Well, it looked like we were going to be able to go that way, and we wanted to apply for both, and they said, no, you have to do one or the other. And we said, well, the only other option we had was to do it to a commercial, to rezone the residential, be the most economical way for us to sell it, and, you know, a little bit more demand for it right now than a commercial building. You know, the commercial on Seventeen, on West, on Third West, just west of us, there's a ton of big boxes, you know, coming in. So we're kind of pigeonholed there, and we can't move. I mean, we can't do anything until we find, get this property, we're not a, you know, we can't move without doing it. And so we, they say we need to expand. We have USDA in our place every day. We get, you know, we get written up for too much stuff going in and out, just kind of one problem after another. We really want to stay where we are, but then we decided, you know, it was like, it wasn't going to work, and we couldn't really get anybody to really say, you know, do it. So we've come to terms with that, and so we are looking to move. We're not moving out of the city, we have two locations inside the city that we stay and expand. We need to expand, we have products that would force us to expand our line here, and that's, and that's the main thing, but basically, we have this, we can't do it from a financial standpoint unless we sell, unless we sell the property or anything else.
Can you tell me a little bit about the product that you sell?
What it is, we, we're a wholesale.
And would you mind grabbing the microphone and pulling it up?
Okay. We mainly sell ninety percent of our businesses, ninety-five percent of our business is to restaurants, and we sell some of the big broadliners. But we take and we process, we take further process down into portions for restaurants and the steaks, we cut them down into portions. And we carry wide grains, we carry a certified natural Angus, we carry a certified organic chicken. We've kind of gotten to more of the specialty products, and that's what's driving us to have the more space and the more room. And we find out for us, that's where the fit is for us. We can't compete against the big boxes like Costco and Restaurant Depot, so those places pretty much give it away, so they don't really care, people, of what you do to it. We carry a lot of the higher-end stuff, we supply mostly the higher-end restaurants.
Thank you. So your intent is to rezone this, sell the property, and move to other locations?
Yes.
Where are your other locations at?
One of them is just west of Redder Road, probably, in that, can't think, there was a couple lots in there we looked at. But mainly, probably where we're going to go is out to the International Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, kind of, I don't want to tie, we, we have somebody that wants us to move there, that's willing to work a deal, give us a property with a future expansion to it. So that's what we're after.
But we're happy to have you on the left side.
I mean, we like where we're at, we like where, I mean, it's very, we've been, you know, stuff's gone there for a long, a lot of years, and, you know, the time has come, we need to expand, and it's a tough decision for us, man, because it's, you know, we're not a big company, so it's really, really tight, really, it's tough for us, so.
Is there a buyer already in mind?
We had one, and we didn't want to wait until, and so we're like, kind of just waiting now, so we've kind of put everything on hold until we can find, you know, until we can get the zoning change, you know, make sure it's done before we jump ahead, but we, we're hoping to. It seems to be a little bit easier to sell a business for housing than it is for a commercial.
Councilman Reverend Mendenhall.
And we met earlier this month to talk about this, but this is a multi-generational family-owned business, and we so appreciate that you want to stay in Salt Lake City. But I think it's serendipitous timing that we would have the downzone for this neighborhood petition in front of us, and here you are, kind of in the heart of that downzone dialogue. And at the same time, you have an endorsement from that same community council that initiated the petition to do the downzone, which is, I think, in our public process section, that the zoning proposal is what we hope will encourage exactly the type of development that we want to see in our neighborhood. That, for me, that's the best endorsement that you can get, and this is, it's a transitioning area, and there's new businesses coming in, I've noticed, that are neighboring your business right now, and it's changing. We're getting, hopefully, more homeownership and people invested in the neighborhood sense of that area. So I think what you're proposing would complement that, and it's good timing with the downzone of the neighborhood.
And I'd also like to note, just to my colleagues here, that this is also the heart of a future RDA project area as well. So it seems very marketable in the future.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We are moving on to number seven, vacating subdivisions in Salt Lake City Airport. This has nothing to do with a golf course. It has to do with subdivisions were out there in the eighteen hundreds, literally, right, Nick?
That's right.
So we have Russell Weeks with council staff, Nick Norris, who's with the planning manager.
Alan McCandless from the airport is also here.
Alan, come on up to the table, feel part of the family.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, this seems pretty cut and dried. These are old subdivisions on airport property that do not reflect the existing zoning or the land use on that property.
Alan, do you want to take it away?
Yes, just a few notes from A. The airport is located in areas where very old subdivisions are located, according to the county records. Some of these subdivisions go back eighteen eighties and before, mainly before the nineteen hundred. Very old. The subdivision houses or streets were never constructed upon, and the subdivisions, as noted, are owned by the airport, largely by the airport. The vacation of these subdivisions probably should have taken place, you know, many years ago with the development of the airport, but nevertheless, we're trying to handle this right now. The airport is in process of constructing new airport facilities associated with the terminal redevelopment program, and we're seeking to have these older subdivisions vacated. The subdivision vacations also are important to the airport as the airport enters the bond market, and we really would like to have the, any issues relating to the land or these subdivisions cleared by the time we enter the bond market for financing for the project. There are nine subdivisions that are being requested to vacate entirely or in part. Five of the nine subdivisions have the airport boundary going through the subdivision, and a part of it is owned by Salt Lake City Department of Airports, the remaining by private owners. And we have a very detailed sheet that shows the interest that we would hold in those five subdivisions as opposed to the other individual owners other than Salt Lake City. And so this request will be to vacate those portions of the nine subdivisions that the airport has interest in. We noticed, I noticed that the proposed ordinance vacates all nine of the subdivisions, and we would just request to work with the attorney's office to make the changes before the public, before the public hearing, so that we can get the airport interest and clarify what the airport owns in five of the nine subdivisions. I can list the subdivisions, if you care to do so, the five subdivisions, or we can just work on that.
What do you mean, what's a five?
The five subdivisions with airport parcel ownership in is Earl D. Gray subdivision, if I can pronounce this, Fritz and Zults subdivision, GS Homes subdivision, Lamar subdivision, and the final being Melchlin and Fleming subdivision.
So Alan, I just had a question. How come this has never been done before? Is it the redevelopment that triggered this?
Yes, that's the redevelopment and the financing, the director would, wanted to have all any potential clouds on the title cleared up before we went to the bonding market for some financing.
Okay. Aaron?
Have we not bonded in the, since the creation of these subdivisions as the airport entity? It seems like this would have come up historically with other bonding.
I'm not aware of, there certainly could have been bonding prior to this. With that research, I'd be to, I am not sure.
I think Cindy might know.
I think Cindy does know.
This is the largest project that the airport has ever bonded for, and it's taking up more landmass than ever before. And I think those are probably factors, they're just trying to get all the ducks in a row.
Some of these subdivisions are located right over, on top of the new development. So they're, they've been there for, since the eighteen hundreds.
So could we expect the new buildings to be named Earl Gray, or Fritz and Zults, or in honor of?
Would it be a key store there? I couldn't help but think that. James, you could work on that.
No, I think we're good. Any other questions?
Well, just to clarify then, it, from what I understood, then there has to be a revised ordinance that, that shows only, that vacates only the land that is controlled by the airport. Is that right?
That's, yes.
Okay.
And so then of the nine subdivisions that are currently there, you're going to go back and work on five, is that correct?
Yes, the, all nine will have to be included in the ordinance to vacate. Five of them will have a portion, it'll be just a portion of that, of those five subdivisions that would be vacated. We'll have to describe those.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Cindy, the, these southern, these southern portions, some are owned by entities, are owned by private owners.
C, D, and E, right? I thought I said them there. Just on the southeast corner of the airport property, right, Russell?
That's correct.
And what is the effect on those property owners?
Those property owners would remain in the same subdivision. It doesn't change anything other than that land that is owned by the city is pulled out of the actual recorded document, and that's all it does. I should note that the reason why this is in front of the council is because some of these subdivisions have platted streets and alleys, and so obviously, those go away when we vacate it. So instead of doing street closures and, or alley closures or street vacations, we're vacating entire subdivisions, and that's another process.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, you want to take a 10-minute break and come back to item number eight? I'm fine moving forward. Okay, we'll keep on moving. Item number eight, budget amendment number three for fiscal year 2015 and 16. We have Jennifer Bruno somewhere, as well as Ben, who's going to get Jennifer. I don't know if Sylvia's here today, is she here? Okay.
Sorry about that, so quick. [laughing] And I did text Gina, so she should be on her way.
Okay.
Hi, there you are. She's here before I am. Um, we were just intending to tie up some loose ends, so, um, I think, uh, the council had asked us, um, at the beginning about looking at potential savings of vacant positions. Um, the administration side has identified for us, uh, what some of the vacant positions are in the general fund, and just doing some quick calculations about what the savings might be, it would be under $100,000, which isn't really a dent if, if you, if you really do have a $3.5 million deficit. So, um, I guess unless the council has direction otherwise, um, we could look at other options for addressing the deficit, if in fact there is one.
And if we wait to tell you, does that prevent them from hiring or moving forward, or are, I mean, are their departments looking at filling these vacant positions currently?
I, I would imagine they're looking at filling vacant positions, uh, and I would guess that they're sort of, you know, waiting to see what the council's discussion is, but, but if there's an indication from the council that you're not interested in pursuing this strategy, then maybe they could move ahead, but I think it's probably just a courtesy at this point, I don't know, Cindy.
Cindy?
They're legally entitled to fill the positions anytime that they're budgeted and there's an FTE. Um, so, so what, what the question is, is whether you'd like us to pursue, um, getting ready for your consideration, a staffing document or a budget amendment, that type of a thing, so. And we, in our informal conversations with council members, we haven't had that requested.
So, I don't know, councilmembers, I, I think $90,000 is a drop in the bucket moving forward, and I think that departments need to be able to know where to go and how to hire and move forward with business as usual. So if you're fine with that, councilmembers, let's, uh, let's drop all this, that we will not, um, withhold the $90,000 for these employees that they're looking at hiring.
Okay, that's a heads up.
Great. Um, the other item that the council, um, asked us to look at was, um, potential outstanding CIP projects, and we provided a list of projects to the council, uh, last week and over email, um, and I believe it's in your packups this time. And, uh, just another loose end, so a sense from the council, is this a strategy you're interested in pursuing? We have heard feedback from a couple of councilmembers concerned that if, uh, funds are withheld on certain projects, that it would severely jeopardize the ability of that project to move forward, so obviously that's a consideration. We did check in with the administration today, and there isn't, uh, necessarily an update on the revenue picture yet at this point, so.
So there's no idea of what the shortfall might be?
No, and we could check and see, I guess, um, if there would be a better idea before April 19th, which is the day you're scheduled to adopt the budget, I guess, um, in theory, maybe you'd know a little bit more at that point, have an additional month at least of sales tax revenue to work off of.
There was just one item that I was worried about, and that was the Jordan River Trail, completing that, because we had received the final funding from the state legislature to, to get that project done, so. When it, for the CIP projects, that's the only one that I would really worry about withholding. I just don't want to set a precedence for the state legislature to see Salt Lake City when they appropriate monies to us, and then us not being, being willing to use them.
And I would say with Seagull Lee project, uh, the, we've asked the Pratt Coalition to raise $1 million, and they're out doing that, um, and as they do it, they say the city is contributing $500,000, and they, um, when I spoke with, um, them last week, or yesterday, I can't remember when it was, they said, "Wow, you will make liars out of us," and, and we, if the funds are not there. And I feel like people have moved forward assuming we are doing that, and, and as I said in the email I sent to all of you, um, we already reduced the amount once because there was a math error in what we were told was available, and so instead of $750,000, we reduced it to $500, and on the Jordan River Bridge, same type of reduction, so I think it's really, I just think it's bad policy for us to go back on our word.
So I guess my follow-up question to that would be, if we move forward with those two CIP projects and held off on the others, how much in savings would that be?
So that would be roughly, uh, that would be roughly 7.7, I guess the 1.1, uh, of those two projects was in addition to the 7.7 million that the administration had identified. So just under, just under 7.7. And maybe what, um, maybe what staff can do is, um, take a shot at identifying $3.5 million worth of CIP projects, um, and come next time where if there's not, uh, an updated, an updated information on the revenue, we can come with sort of a prioritization of those projects. I mean, there are certain, certain accounts where, you know, like the cost overrun account, or, um, maybe some other projects that have been hanging around for a long time, where maybe the council would feel a little bit more comfortable, um, holding, you know, holding those funds, um, I put that in quotation, so, you know, I, I think that there is a sense that they could be released if and when the revenue picture comes in fine, which we all hope it does, um, but, you know, maybe.
But in the meantime, identifying those.
Could prioritize that list, if that's, if that's okay, do you think?
Excluding the, I mean, if the councilmembers are fine with that, excluding the Pratt Trail and the Jordan River Trail, are you okay with that? Mm-hmm.
Sure, show us the list.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
One other item?
Um, this was one, um, I just want to put on your radar, we, I don't have a solution right now. Um, the administration brought to our attention that, um, they wanted to enhance the bike share program by, uh, $5,000, and it, it looks, we hadn't been clear on what funding would be used. Uh, it's not a large dollar amount, it looks like they're, we're looking to use some money from sustainability, and, um, that money would have to be appropriated by the council. So, um, I've been, uh, in informal contact with Patrick, and he said they would come back to the council, um, on that.
With the money from sustainability or other?
For, yes, they said they would just come back with a plan. So it's been announced, but it hasn't been appropriated, so we've just got a chicken egg thing going.
And this is for the city employee?
Yes.
Employee bike share program.
And they'll be getting back to us.
Great, thank you, Jennifer, that was easy, right, Ben?
Very.
Okay. All right, we are an hour and 10 minutes ahead of schedule. Here we go, Lynn, Lynn Pace and David Littback, we're on to item number nine, the 26th state legislative session. And before you get going, can I just congratulate you too? You guys are a great tandem up there, and, uh, were able to get a lot accomplished this year.
Uh, I, I will, I will, we have a scant audience, but I, I will concur with those comments. Um, I've been at this for a few years, and having David on board this year was absolutely delightful and a tremendous help, we have.
Who, so my question is, who was the good cop, who was the bad cop?
Depending on the day.
Okay. So you, and who we were reading for sometimes.
Yes, yes. So, um, but thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to, to visit with you. We would, of course, be happy to answer any questions, I don't think we can take enough time to get you back on the schedule, so I apologize for that. But, uh, I think we, I, I tried to give you sort of a summary in the, the weekly email I sent out as to what passed and what didn't, uh, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but if not, what I, what I think might be more useful is to identify areas where there probably will be some significant follow-up required on the items we've been tracking. But are there any questions before we go into that? Okay. Then I think what we'll, what I'd like to do is just sort of walk through, um, by category, the areas that we've been working on, and then talk about areas where I think we will, and I say "we," it may be the administration, it may be the council, will, will need follow-up, um, to continue the dialogue. The first is, um, uh, we've been, obviously been engaged in dialogue with the state about the development of the new prison in the northwest quadrant, and, and what will, what will follow that. There was really not any, any significant legislation that affected the northwest quadrant per se, but there was a lot of discussion about the possibility and about the economic opportunity. The follow-up pieces for the city are, first, to continue with the, the adoption of the master plan for the northwest quadrant, and then as a follow-up to that, the applicable zoning for the area. We may also want to explore the possibilities of creating a redevelopment, what we used to call a redevelopment area there, for the purpose of focusing resources on, on identifying city priorities and focusing those resources on those, on those priorities. And then we would want to, we, there will be agreements that will need to be, uh, drafted and executed with the state for the installation and, of utilities and roadways, and, and then there will be ongoing discussion about, uh, the North Temple landfill. So probably none of that is new to you, but those are all areas that will require significant follow-up. Many of those, of course, are, are items that the council will be dealing with shortly.
Lynn, I didn't hear it correctly, did you say North Temple Light Rail?
North Temple landfill.
Oh.
But thank you for that catch. Second item that I wanted to raise, unless there's questions on that specifically, um, the, uh, well, I, I will just say, the first, the first two items, the, the consideration of the master plan and the zoning for the area are items that I know that are already on the council agenda, and I assume you'll be scheduling those as your, um, schedule allows. The second issue that I'd want to bring to your attention is that we were successful on all of the legislation we were pursuing relative to, um, the homeless shelter, homeless facilities and services. There were, I think, five pieces of legislation that we were tracking, every one of those bills passed, and we were able to get, we got terrific support from the state in doing so, but there will be lots of follow-up, uh, required on those issues. Specifically, the first item is that the city, it has always been anticipated that the, the city would, would reconstitute its site selection committee and process. The state's, uh, financial assistance was predicated on the identification and construction of multiple sites for, uh, where, where services could be provided, and, um, some of that, some of that has been addressed in the legislation, and some will need to be further explored through our site selection process.
Lynn, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, so what was the total dollar amount? I kept tracking it, but a total dollar amount that was allocated by the legislature for this purpose?
Uh, $9.2 million, so.
So not quite the 27 million we wanted.
Early, well, early on, we understood that, um, we were going for a three-year commitment from the legislature, which they have, um, stated, uh, quite a few times. The, the breakdown of the funding is four and a half million dollars is ongoing, and 4.75 is one-time. Uh, the one-time dollars are specifically for, for the facilities, and we anticipate with the way they split those dollars, that some of the ongoing money this first year will be used for facilities as well, but the ongoing is for services, programming and operations of the facilities as well as what they're doing.
And was, uh, the money for the facilities tied specifically to Midvale, or do we have other options?
Yeah, so, um, as you know, part of the legislation, uh, required that the, uh, Midvale Family Shelter remained open year-round, so part of the funding, both the ongoing and one-time dollars, are dedicated to Midvale, not solely Midvale, but to Midvale, to address some of the concerns there in terms of the pedestrian safety, right-of-ways, um, as well as the facility itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the, just to add to that, the, it was always our intention that this legislation would seek support from the state, and that the siting decisions would come later, uh, but some of the key legislators involved in the process felt strongly that we needed to maximize the facilities we already had, including the one in Midvale, and so they were fairly aggressive about including that in the legislation. Consequence of that will be that it has sort of shifted the dialogue so that the first facility to be addressed with these funds will be the Midvale facility, and it's, and it's, I've been made clear that that Midvale facility will be used for families with children, uh, because that's the priority population. What that will do is it will, it, it sort of accelerates that first facility in terms of location and population and what needs to be done there. That will also essentially accelerate whatever turns out to be site two, whether that's a, uh, whatever it may be that we do in Rio Grande or other sites in terms of identifying populations to be served and needs to be met, and configuration and location, et cetera, et cetera, and a lot of that will come back to a dialogue, an ongoing dialogue with the council.
Our, our focus with Salt Lake City will be the single men, single women, um, population, homeless population. I will just say so that, um, so that you're aware, uh, just recently, it, it came to our attention that with the Midvale, uh, facility, there is a bit of a funding gap between when the new funds become available, the state dollars, and what had been appropriated by the Road Home for the remainder of this year. So there's a great deal of effort right now, of people working together to try and, um, find a way to cover that gap.
I don't disagree that a single men and single women future housing and shelter has a place here in Salt Lake City, but you said that that will be our focus, and I wonder how you've already arrived at that conclusion.
That was, um, the stated intent at the beginning of legislative session, that when, um, Salt Lake City and Salt Lake County, uh, first began dialoguing with the legislature, it was with the idea of two facilities, one being, being the focus on families with children, and the other being, uh, single men and single women. So that has been the stated legislative intent from the beginning.
So they will be included in the same facility, single men and single women?
Good catch, no, not necessarily. So those were the, those were the target populations, I don't think that precludes us, and I think our preference is that we may be looking at two separate facilities at two separate sites, one single men, one single women, particularly because our concern that the types of facilities and the new model we're looking at are much smaller in terms of scale, 200, 250 maximum, but if you combine two tar, you know, two populations within one community, the impact on the community, so I think our preference is to look at the possibility of two separate sites, two separate facilities.
Not to interrupt, are you wanting to make the point that there's a lot of policy? Yes. Implications here, and the council hasn't had a discussion yet? Exactly. Uh, um, David had spoken with me about getting this on the council agenda, and we are tentatively on for, I think, the 12th, is that right?
Yeah.
So will you be laying out these policy considerations?
Absolutely, we're, we're also hoping to, um, have possibly Gail Miller and Palmer DePaulis, hopefully for April 12th, to talk about the, the previous work that was done by the selection site evaluation commission.
This is news to me, and awesome news, this is great. It, um, it just seems that we're getting, and I, and I know that when we get into the state's tent and start asking for funding, which now has been received, that we are making those policy decisions as part of that negotiation process without policy procedure, really. That's, that's the way you play the game, I guess, but we have nine sub-populations, and now we've talked about three that have already been, maybe not decided in terms of where in the city they will be, but that we're taking them on, so that leaves six sub-populations yet to be determined, and hopefully that'll be more through, uh, transparent public and policy process. And, and it's not too late, really, for transparency on this piece in terms of where and how, and those types of things.
Oh, it will be an extremely transparent and public process.
And the council will serve their regular role?
We have already, actually, an enhanced role, if I may. Uh, we have already spoken, the mayor's office has already spoken with Councilman Rogers. We have already spoken, the mayor's office has already spoken with Councilman Rogers about, about council's involvement in the site selection commission and making sure that we have representation from the council on the commission, that the council is engaged throughout the entire process. We're still kind of formulating that plan about what the relocation commission, the reinvigorated evaluation commission looks like. And how we, we don't want to repeat what has happened, but I think for the new administration and for the council, in some ways, we're in the same boat, that we haven't been fully briefed on, on the previous work and we want to build off of what was done, a lot of good work that was done, and make sure that we're able to move forward together.
Yeah. I want to make sure we're clear too. I don't want us stepping in the middle of the sites, the committees who are working very hard from the public and private end to our funding policymaking on the private end, they're running the facilities already. So, if it's in Salt Lake City and there's some policy questions about that, then yeah, but I don't want to insert ourselves into this upfront and say we want to dictate based on policy for Salt Lake City. I want to hear what the experts are working on, be very clear about our role in this. I don't want to micromanage this at this point.
I was just gonna say, in addition to what Andrew said, we're not starting from ground zero on the site, site selection, right? We're, we're, we're using that as a stepping stone to move forward. We're not at ground zero again. So, a lot of work was done with the previous evaluation commission around developing criteria, but as we look for locations, what do we need to be looking for, both in terms of the impact on the community as well as how we better serve the homeless community? And so, we hope to be able to really build off of that, as well as you have to keep in mind that a lot of this is also happening in tandem with the ongoing work of the Salt Lake County Collective Impact, which Salt Lake City is heavily involved, in particular, Councilman, with what you say about the services model and where the experts lie in terms of how this resource model comes together, the types of programs and services that need to be a part of these new resource centers. So, all of that is happening and we hope to build off of all of that work.
Yes, please.
Just, the other thing is that there may be a role for the council in zoning, so that, that has its state statute role.
Absolutely. We anticipate quite a bit of conversation about zoning.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I just wanted to add on this point that I want to publicly express our appreciation to Salt Lake County and key legislators at the state who really stepped up in a major fashion to support us on this issue. And, and I think we need, we need to be cognizant of that, but we should also bear in mind that, you know, notwithstanding the support we have received to date, the, you know, there's a large task yet to be addressed in going forward with the next steps. The next one that I had on my list was historic districts and setting aside the, you know, all of the sort of ups and downs of that process, including my own frustrations, it's, it's pretty clear that what the state legislative leaders were looking for was a process that would produce a greater degree of consensus within neighborhoods prior to going forward with these districts. And so, if you, if you look at it in that light, the legislation that was passed said we either want a greater degree of consensus from the residents or a greater degree of consensus among council members. And so, the bill says, in essence, two-thirds or 50%, two-thirds and 50% of the neighbors or if for some reason it falls short of one of those targets, a supermajority vote of the city council. I, I say that because I think that's really the, the large objective that they were trying to achieve here is, is to minimize the friction and the tension and the turmoil within the neighborhood. Having said all that, I think you're aware of the fact that there are, in fact, two petitions in process that have been interrupted to some degree by this, the state legislative process. Now that the legislature is over, those processes are moving forward again. One of them has already gone to the balloting process and those results will be available in about 30 days. The other one is a little further delayed and so that won't be coming until later, but as soon as those two petitions are, make their way through the administrative process in the ordinary course, they will be forwarded to the council for your review and consideration. And we can have more discussion at that time. Let's see. The other item, specific item, oh, a couple of things. The, as you're aware, we received the funding requested for the shortfall on the Jordan River Parkway Bridge. I don't, I forget. I, I think that money is going actually to Jordan River Commission, but together with city funds and county funds, that will enable the design. Am I getting it out there? Yes. I was just looking in the wrong direction there. Anyway, we're pleased to be able to move forward with that project and hopefully be able to complete that Lincoln Trail. A couple of other legislative items that were completed, both of which I think are good news for Salt Lake City but may require some measure of administrative follow-up. One is the wildland fire bill that shifts the cost for the suppression of, of wildland fires from local government to the state and in exchange, the state asks for a contribution from local government, but it's an in-kind contribution in terms of education, best practices, fire mitigation. And so, we will want to work with our fire folks to make sure that those, that that appropriate amount is allocated toward those resources, both on wildland areas within the city and on city-owned watershed or canyon property, even if it's outside city limits. But we think that's a very positive result, but we'll, we'll need to shift our focus in terms of how we address those, those risks. Another similar bill, there was a bill passed imposing a series of requirements or standards for the use of police body cameras. And I don't know enough about what we are doing currently to know how much of that we are already meeting within the city and how much of that may require some adjustment. It also deals with data retention and disclosure and provides some very specific guidelines as to what, how much of that footage is public or private at different stages of the process and depending on what was captured on the cameras. So, I think you may also have been aware that the Rocky Mountain Power had a piece of legislation they were heavily pursuing. It was their step, in fact, I forget what that stands for anymore. But anyway, so they have their legislation that will now be taken into account in the ongoing dialogue with the city administration over the renewal of the Rocky Mountain Power franchise agreement and we're hopeful that we can continue to pursue our air quality objectives and renewable energy objectives with Rocky Mountain Power. Do you want to add anything to that?
You're welcome.
Ah, there was, there were several bills, as I think I mentioned, I've mentioned previously, that dealt with air quality. One of those in particular, House Bill 316, dealt with, it was sort, became sort of an omnibus bill dealing with building codes. And so, it adopted with generous modifications, all of the, most of the 2015 codes for building code, electrical code, energy code, but with generous exceptions. It also adopted a six-year code adoption cycle going forward. And within the bill were a number of other provisions that were really sort of a mixed bag, but on the whole, we hope will be helpful in terms of addressing air quality or improving air quality for the purpose of addressing it from a source, a point source in new homes. There were issues dealing with water heaters and, and the energy, energy efficiency of new homes in a variety of ways. Most of the air quality advocates like the city would have liked to have seen something much more than we got, but we were grateful for the changes that were adopted in the legislation. So, on the whole, we think that that's a positive bill, but we recognize that there's a broad variety of opinions about that, about those changes. Do you have any other questions or?
I do. What about the benefits, Bill?
There was a great deal of discussion about retirement. At the end of the day, there was only one retirement bill that passed and that was a bill that said any changes to the retirement system have to be fully funded, meaning that everyone, during the course of the session, it became apparent that URS has been charging for a, charging more than they needed to, to, to fund the current system. And so, some of the retirement bills proposed to take advantage of that existing headroom, as it were, to make changes to the retirement system. In the, in the end, none of those retirement bills passed. The only bill that did pass was one that said in the future, you can't use that headroom to fund retirement enhancements. If you have an enhancement you want to pass, you have to fully fund it in that legislation. So, I think, I suspect that those, some of that legislation will be back in subsequent years, but in this year in particular, given some of the uncertainties and the fiscal impact of those bills, none of those retirement bills passed. So, we should not see any, any significant-
There won't be any impact to Salt Lake City?
Nothing more than just the demographic and, and market changes of URS and their, their assessments. There was no new legislation.
What finally ended up happening, we were out of town for the end of the legislature, lucky us.
And vehicles.
Uh-huh. And I didn't follow what finally happened with the non-competition bill. Did, did it die or did it survive and if it survived, will something happen in the interim? Because I know that was a real concern for the chamber and could really be difficult for us in terms of-
Correct. A very strident non-compete, it was not a bill that we were following per se for city stuff, but it was a very strident non-competition bill passed the House and as Representative, former Representative Littback would know, at the end of the session somehow, all of those become deal points of negotiation between the House and the Senate. At the end of the day, the Senate passed the bill, but after having amended it substantially so that it was really a very watered-down version, essentially adopting by reference whatever the common law already provides.
Which, which allows for the continued use of non-compete agreements, but I think puts some limitations in terms of length of time and things like that. So, you almost referenced it.
Yes. The one substantive provision that was added was to say you can have non-competition agreements for a reasonable period of time, which is what the case law allows, but then the state imposed a directive to say one year is a reasonable period of time, agreements that don't extend beyond one year. So, that's really the only substantive change that came out of that legislation, notwithstanding all the turmoil.
And do we see any problem with that in terms of our economic development? And, because I know there was discussion, people saying, "I won't bring my business to Utah at all and certainly won't."
I think, given what passed, I don't think it will have any significant impact. The question will be, was it, was that sort of a one-time venting of frustrations or is it an issue that will come back in future years? And I, I don't have, I don't have a way to predict that.
Vouchers, for example. Okay, thanks.
So.
I know there were some changes to liquor legislation as far as hotels go. Can you tell me a bit about that?
You know, we were, we were pursuing, we were interested in a couple of specific changes in liquor legislation, neither of which got any traction. So, the, the, my understanding, and I will, I will want to do more homework than I have done, is that the changes that were adopted were minimal in terms of their impact, that they were really more in the nature of clarifying housekeeping type changes, not substantive changes in policy. But I can look into that further if you'd like. But I'm not aware of any significant policy changes in terms of liquor legislation.
The Downtown Alliance mentioned that that freed up about 50 or so licenses and I would be curious to know which licenses and what that might mean for restaurants or bars in Salt Lake.
Let me follow up. In terms, in term, when I say cleanup, what, what really was happening is that they were consolidating, for, for some parties who had multiple licenses under one head, they were able to consolidate those and thereby free up additional headroom for licenses, but I don't know whether those are earmarked for specific, for specific counties or specific types of uses. We were generally supportive, but those were not the agenda items that we were looking for, so I'll have to follow up.
Yeah, we can follow up then. Thanks. Thank you, Lynn and David. We, we really appreciate you and all your hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate your support and I, let me extend my thanks to the legislative subcommittee that spent a lot of time during the session wrestling with these issues and I appreciate that, that time and the feedback given was really very valuable, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on to our last item of the afternoon and that is the report and announcements from our executive director.
Yes, and we, yes.
Nothing else, huh? No, he's out of town. So, that would be it. We wanted to end early because we know there are some people that commute to Salt Lake City that need to get to their caucus meetings. I don't know how long it takes for you to get home, but make sure you get to your caucus meeting. The Democratic caucus meeting starts at, is it 6:30? Six to 8:30 and the Republican starts at 7:00. And if you're not a registered Republican, you cannot go. You can go, but you can't vote. And if you're unaffiliated, you, are you sure?
Not registered.
Well, you can go and register if you want. Right.
As a Republican.
Yeah, you have to register to vote, but for the Democratic caucus, you don't have to. Thank you. Okay, well, that's it. Until next week.